Good evening and welcome, everyone, to the April 19th, 2023 Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, Chair. As this is a hybrid meeting involving both in-person and remote participants, I'll read the following statement into the record. This is to advise, formally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an Act Relative to Extending Certain State of Emergency Accommodations, signed into law on June 16th, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Wednesday, April 19th, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the Hearing Room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664. The public is welcome to attend via remote access provided on the meeting agenda posted on the town website under the Agenda and Minutes tab by selecting Planning Board. I will begin by taking roll call. Susan Britta.
Here.
Will Rubenstein.
Here.
Jim Saban.
Peter Slovac.
Here.
Ken Smith.
Here.
Chris Vincent. Joanne Crowley here. Seeing we have a quorum present, I will now call the meeting to order. For remote public participation during this meeting, I will invite the audience to comment. Online audience members can use their raise hand button to notify the Chair. Dial-in audience members should press *9 on their phones. All audience members will be muted until you're recognized by me to participate. Once recognized, audience members are asked to identify themselves by first and last name and affiliation for the public record. Please join me now in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. First item on our agenda this evening is an approval not required A&R Plan Number 2938. The applicants are Peter W. Atchison, David C. Atchison, and Eleanor D. Atchison. The property is located as an unnumbered lot off Pleasant Street in South Yarmouth, Massachusetts, Assessor Map 59, Parcel 91, RS 40 zoning district. The A&R application request is, the A&R divides an unbuildable lot into three unbuildable lots for conveyance for a portion of abutting properties. Kathy has prepared our usual requisite planner memo. It's in our packets. And I see that representatives from Downcape Engineering for the Atchison family are here remotely, if I have that right. Dan, you're here remotely?
Yes, correct.
Hi, Dan.
He's a passenger, not a driver.
Let's go with that.
Dan Ojala from Downcape Engineering. So I'll turn it over to you on this particular A&R.
Fair enough. Again, for the record, Dan Ojala, I'm a surveyor and civil engineer with Downcape Engineering in Yarmouth Port, and we're helping the Atchisons clean up some lot lines off of small, a couple of small pieces that they own down on Bass River. So this is a kind of a footpath and a little beach that were relics of an earlier time. They control the end two lots and all the rights have been released in this little footpath and the beach. And then like to give one half, the footpath will go to the Westerly property, which is LV Atchison, and the beach will go to the other trustees, Atchison trustees on the right. So it'll kind of clean the assessor's map up a little bit. It's a small, thin strip and a little foot that aren't really needed or appropriate, and we could use the land more efficiently. So it's simply a division to accommodate that re-division. We have a favorable staff report from Kathy Williams, and if you have any questions, I'd certainly be glad to answer them, but should be a pretty straightforward. It's no new lots are created is the important thing, so it would deserve endorsement as approval not required under the subdivision control law. But I'd certainly be glad to answer any questions if you do have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. J. Any questions from the board?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right. May I have a motion then to endorse A&R Plan Number 2938 as prepared by Downcape Engineering and dated March 31st, 2023? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I will take a roll call. Ken Smith.
Aye.
Peter Slovac.
Aye.
Will Rubenstein.
Aye.
Susan Britta.
Aye.
Joanne Crowley, aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
I'll let you know when you can come pick it up.
Sounds good. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a request for a release of an agreement the Planning Board entered into. The release of One Algonquin Street from a Planning Board agreement dated July 25th, 1959, with the Brookline Savings and Loan Association. In our packets for review and approval that Kathy prepared with the help of the applicants is an agreement release. Somewhat unusual circumstance, Kathy spent a fair amount of time on this over the last several months to clear the title for One Algonquin Street, and Kathy will provide the background for us on this particular request.
Sure. In all honesty, I think this is a case where a reference to an agreement was made within the deed of One Algonquin, which didn't really apply to One Algonquin. It was like a couple subdivisions previously, but unfortunately, because that document is referenced in that deed, it keeps coming up when they do titles, and they just want to clear the title by eliminating this agreement and having something recorded. So that's what the release is all about. So this is the document, this is just the general standard agreement that the Planning Board would have for a particular subdivision, but it's for a subdivision, sorry. It's for a subdivision for the Planning Board 1193 RS, which is a subdivision of this particular lot 46, and that's what's referenced. What we have is our subdivision 1193 RS is when they subdivided that 46 and created Algonquin Road, and then they also created this extra lot 69. And then Lot 69 is what actually became the subdivision where Lot 72, which is One Algonquin, was actually created. So it's this weird anomaly where something is being referenced in a deed today for a couple subdivisions back that doesn't really apply. 72, Lot 72, has been released from the Planning Board subdivision 1887, which was the subdivision it was created in. So this is really just trying to clear the title and making it easier to convey the property.
And who has requested this, Kathy?
The attorneys for the owner of One Algonquin, as well as the person who wants to buy it who's represented by Attorney Paul Tardif.
Okay. And none of those representatives are joining us this evening, right?
No.
Any questions or concerns about this? I guess we'll direct them to you, Kathy.
Sure.
You're our duty expert on this.
I fought it for a long time because it didn't make any sense to me because it doesn't apply to this particular lot, but it is referenced, if you look and highlighted in their yellow, referencing the document that is that agreement. So it's in their deed.
Sorry, indeed.
So any questions? All right.
Pretty straightforward.
So may I have a motion then to release One Algonquin Street, West Yarmouth, shown as Lot 72 in Land Court Plan 19724K from the July 25th, 1959 agreement between the Yarmouth Planning Board and Brookline Federal Savings and Loan Association, recorded with the Land Court Division of the Barnstable Registry of Deeds as Document Number 61808. Can I have a motion, please? So moved. And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call again. Ken Smith.
Aye.
Peter Slovac.
Aye.
Will Rubenstein.
Aye.
Susan Britta.
Aye.
Joanne Crowley, aye. Passes unanimously.
So we'll need to coordinate for you to come in and get it notarized and signed.
Okay. Next on our agenda, our continuing discussion with regard to the accessory apartment bylaw. We are continuing, obviously, our deliberations in the process of preparing a draft amendment for the Yarmouth zoning bylaw related to accessory apartments. In our packets, you'll see Draft Number 10 dated April 11th regarding our most recent deliberations with Town Council Jay Talaman at our meeting on April 5th. Also included in our packets Kathy provided is a calendar for our public outreach sessions and a memo that she has sent to various town departments seeking further comment on Draft Number 10. So Kathy, why don't you walk us through some of the info in our packets? And then subsequent to that, I think it would be helpful for us to, even though there's only three of us, four of us prior members, to share with Peter kind of our views of the draft amendment, those provisions that we are, have favorable opinions about and those we might not. And then, Peter, if it's okay with you, I'd like to see where you might see yourself in any comments and sharing with you any of your thoughts on the amendment as it now sits. I think it'd just be good to get us all up to speed as to where we are feeling, all, of course, subject to what we hear from the public. That's our most important job here, is to listen to what the public will have to say and adjust our positions accordingly, I think. Okay. So Kath, why don't you run through the info you provided to us, and then we'll just run through kind of where we are on some of the key provisions. Thank you.
There's not that many changes. I mean, this minor edit here is there's no need to really have that explanation of no duplexes or multifamily, so I just took it out. I had put that in originally just to give you guys an understanding of what was originally meant. I think it just complicates things and isn't something that's really needed to go in there. We did talk at our last meeting about the parking and about not allowing any new parking to be created for the accessory apartment use within 10 feet from any property line. The only question I had for the board was whether you don't want someone to be able to park within 10 feet of the property line, the front property line. Because I know that in my house, you can park, I just have my driveway, you could park all the way in that, and some of the parking, if I had it fully for people, would be within that 10-foot buffer. So are we really talking about a 10-foot side buffer or a rear buffer or, I just don't want this to be a case where someone could fit in their car for their two cars by putting them in tandem to the right, but then, you know, it ends up being within 10 feet of the front setback? Well, most of our driveways do. We cut through that 10-foot front yard setback in order to get into our garages and our parking areas.
I think this was a point that Chris made last meeting.
Yeah.
I think his, and I don't want to speak for him, but I think he was referring to the side.
He was.
I think that's where the most concern was.
Kathy, I think, you know, just to reiterate what Peter just said, I think Chris's intention on that was simply, you know, the abutters' property line to, within 10 feet of an abutter is how I interpreted it. But as, you know, as Peter just said, I don't want to speak for Chris, but I thought that's how he phrased it, was, you know, having a parking area within 10 feet of an abutter's property would, basically is how I interpreted it.
So it would be the side and rear setback.
That's right. So instead of any property line, it would have to be adjusted again?
Yes.
And that's not the case now. Somebody can park right up to the lot line now.
Right. That's right.
I'll park my car at the end of the street when the blizzard's coming, at the end of the driveway, when the blizzard's coming.
Maybe the end of the street might cause some trouble for the friends at DPW.
I get it in close enough.
I get it in close enough.
We're getting out afterwards.
That's a very good point, Peter. So it's rear and side?
Yep. So we can just say from any rear or side property line.
Sounds good.
Nothing got changed here. This was just a carrying over of a correction that Town Council had already made, instead of saying before the adoption of this bylaw, saying before the effective date of this bylaw, and just taking out the insertion date. So we're just, was bringing that through. He'd done it in one location, we're just carrying it through all of these locations, and that's what all of this is. The one thing that got changed in 407.1.11, there were some concerns, I think Peter had brought it up, with regard to what if someone's already renting out one of the, an accessory apartment when it gets conveyed? So this was saying, well, instead of having a whole separate situation, I can enlarge it a little bit, right now, originally it had been written that it needed to be, you needed to send the affidavit to the Building Commissioner prior to occupying or renting the accessory apartment. This now just follows what it is for family-related and affordable, it just needs to be within 45 days of the sale. That gives someone time in order to do that, and they don't have to kick out someone who's renting or get into any kind of trouble by still continuing to rent it before they put that affidavit in. So that was just the 45 days there.
Madam Chair, can I ask Kathy a question on 7.1? Just for my own clarification on the 45 days, is that closure or filing? Because it is, you know, it is different. So, you know, signing of the closure of the deal and then filing, which usually takes a couple weeks afterwards within the structure. So I guess I'm just trying to understand where the 45 days start. Where's the clock start?
It's the date of the sale. It's the date where you have your signature on it, not the date of recording.
Okay.
Because then someone could just wait and wait and wait and wait.
That's where I'm going.
It's not going to move into a place that you have been.
Exactly. Yep, exactly that.
Most attorneys are pretty good about that.
Yep.
I'm not sure why, oh, I had a question to Town Council, and I didn't hear back from him. It just felt like here there was like something was missing. Additionally, the following stat shall govern the transfer underlying ownership of affordable accessory apartments in existence prior to the effective date. I feel like there's a word missing there, so I just, I've asked him to clarify what he means by underlying ownership of the affordables. So I do need to follow up with Town Council on that. I have a feeling it's just a small word that's missing. That all stayed the same. We did hear, I did send out requests for input from the Building Department for a final review. Mark sent back that he was good with the way it was written. We do have a response here from Jay Gardner, who's the new Director of the Health Department, kind of saying that the primary focus of the public health remains that of all proposals for development are fully compliant with updated Title V regulations to ensure the continued safety of the public and the protection of the environment. So it's kind of what I was saying to you last week, Ken, that it's just whatever Title V is, is what they're going to be looking for. But he does indicate that the Health Department agrees with the proposed amendments and looks forward to working cooperatively with the Planning Board, so. I did hear back, some back and forth questions with Amanda Lima, who's the town engineer, but more was like with regard to things about the, how this would impact the comprehensive wastewater plan. Obviously, we've accommodated for some additional bedrooms in that build-out analysis. So I'm just gonna, I'm still going back and forth a little bit with her, but I don't think she had any suggested edits. It was more questions at this time. Both Lori Rizala, who's the Water and Sewer Superintendent, and Jeff are on vacation this week, so she's going to wait to hear from them. And then this is just the accessory apartment. I don't know if you want to stop here or...
I think these are the dates we more or less generally agreed to, kind of the window of time.
So June 7th is our regular meeting here, Wednesday, and this would be the hybrid meeting. So we'd have it recorded, it would go up on the town website, and people could participate remotely. The meeting's on the Wednesday, the next week, June 14th, and then a week and a half later on the Monday, June 26th. Those would not be, we would not be able to do remote access. Those would be in-person meetings only, and the June 14th would be at the Senior Center, and the June 26th would be at the fire station. I'm trying to coordinate with both places and the IT Department to make sure that we can have the projector and that type of thing, to give the PowerPoint presentation, have the mics and those types of things. So we should be in good shape.
Okay. So I would hope everyone can try to put these dates on their calendar, as many of us who can be there, I think, would be very, very helpful.
I tried to pick the dates that I got the most people.
Madam Chair, can I ask?
Yes, of course.
I guess my question, I'll plan on being here on those dates. How are we planning on publicizing this?
Yeah, that was my next question.
And get as many people to participate as possible.
I was thinking about town meeting, which I know we had talked about.
Yeah, I did. I talked to the town moderator and town administrator, and they didn't want us to do that at town meeting. They didn't want it complicated. They want people to think, what do you mean? Is it on the agenda? Is it on the warrant now? And get people all riled up. We've got enough things that we're kind of concentrating on. So I think we'll do, you know, I have the whole list of everybody, you know, who has, you know, shown interest in all of our visioning things, and in addition to, I had included this in my memo. So we'll have a press release, we'll send it to the newspapers and the radio, we'll have social media posts, we'll have a news item on the town website that also gets blasted out. We have a bunch of direct emails through neighborhood groups and civic associations. We go to the chamber. The schools have been really great. We send them just a link with a brief one-line text, and they send it out to their 5,000 family members, and it gives them the link to the town website. That helped us out a lot with the recent open space and recreation plan survey that we had. We've got a lot of people who did it through that. We also make sure that we notify all the different boards and committees because those are interested, involve people in our community. We put flyers at the libraries, the Senior Center, Town Hall, post office, bus stops. We include it in the Board of Selectmen meeting packet, and then we also post it on Channel 18.
Yeah, Susan.
Just make sure in the announcement that they include the link to the actual draft of the legisla, the draft of the zoning, because a lot of people read the announcement, and they'll neglect to pick up what they should be reading to be prepared to come to the meeting. So the link is very important that they know we're going to have something for them to read prior to coming to the meeting.
This is the start of a landing page that'll be on the town website, and that it'll also have, you know, the attachment. This will then go on to explain that here's the draft that we're looking at, and it'll have the map. One of the other things that you guys had talked about was, you know, how could people determine how they could find out what size lot they had? I did talk with GIS, and we do have a GIS on the town website, but it is somewhat limited, but he did add the square footage of everyone's lot. So you could just type in your address, and it'll go to it, and you click it, and that will tell you the square footage. So we'll have those instructions in addition to going to the online assessor's database where you can find out information. And I probably will even try and put on the laser fish online, because a lot of people don't realize that there's a lot of information about your property on the town website under the online records.
Does that tell you that you're in Zone 2 at all?
It doesn't. That's the only thing that that doesn't tell you.
Okay.
And that was unfortunate, because I could only get so much information put on.
Understood.
And I'd like to think most people know, but I can guarantee you they don't.
I guarantee most people don't know, so.
I know. That's the nice thing about the map, because it does have the gray area that's highlighted. Yep.
I appreciate the reluctance of town staff to want us to be outside town meeting, but I do find it intriguing that the single largest event in our town every year that attracts the most people is going to be the place where we're not going to be able to promote something that the public has been saying to us that we're not promoting enough. So I respect, respectfully, I think it's wrong, and I think we, I am happy to stand in front of town meeting for a half an hour before town meeting starts. I don't, I just, I say that on the record because we have continuously, and maybe you've heard some of this in the past, been, I'll use the word, pilloried for not being public enough with the discussions around this accessory apartment bylaw. And here is an opportunity to literally get in front of the most number of humans that get together the one time, or maybe twice if we count Fall Town Meeting. And I just would like to say, I respectfully disagree.
The only thing that you might be able to do, we might be able to do, is hand out something to people as they're leaving town meeting.
I hear you, Kathy, but I would just like to respectfully say to that, no. Because, I mean, everybody at the, by the end of town meeting, people's, in my experience, people's brains are melted and their intention is to exit. Whereas, again, I respectfully just disagree with the advice that you've been given internally. We will still do all these...
You need permission to hand out anything at town.
No, I get it. We'll still do all the amazing things you're saying, Kathy, but, but again, and this is partly because I've only lived in Massachusetts for 19 years, and I find town meeting to be incredibly archaic, but yet here, because we do have it, is the one time, we have the most number of citizens in the 30,000-person town, and it is not, we've been advised not to promote something that we've been told is not being promoted enough. Thank you.
Kathy, when might we see some of these materials that will be produced, the flyer, the, what will be on the website? When will, when do you think we could actually see what documentation you're going to pull together? We talked about the FAQs, I know you're working on those, and just what the notice would look like, just kind of the, the package of public, the public outreach package, so to speak, I think would be, would be important to have for a number of different reasons. One, that we all get our eyes on it, and to some degree, maybe get our fingerprints on it as well. And secondly, I was going to raise this after, at the end of our discussion, but it seems timely now. We had also talked about, because we are appointed by the Board of Selectmen, reaching out to them and meeting with them and getting them, getting on their calendar prior to this, so.
Oh, I didn't think prior to, I thought as, to meet with them after you've heard from what the public was saying.
I'm thinking maybe twice. I think, and I'd be more than glad to do it. They have a meeting on, I have, the agenda is blank as far as I can see so far, on June 6th, the day before we go out. And I would be more than glad to meet with them and present what our plan is and our three outreach meetings and our communication plan and what, and we will have it all together there at that point, and, which we wouldn't have for town meeting. You know, we wouldn't have a handout, you know, it'd be tough to pull it all together.
That is certainly a reasonable next step.
Yeah, so that's, I, I, I think that would be important to do.
Susan.
Susan, you had a...
I was just going to say, on the, on the suggestion of talking to the Board of Selectmen, I think I had mentioned before, or volunteered before several months ago, to go to, talk to the people, the chairpeople in Dennis, to see what they did to make their sort of ADU so successful the first time out. And one of the keys to the success was they periodically briefed the Selectmen, so that they got feedback immediately from the Selectmen. The meetings were open to the public, as you know, and they knew that the Selectmen were going to hear from an update, and so they got information from the public as well as the, that study, they were called a study group, it wasn't the Planning Board. And I think that was, they claimed that that was very, very effective. It really gave them some guidance as to, you know, what they should be promoting, what they shouldn't be, back off of this, you heard the public, that's not going to go well. You know, so I think it's an excellent suggestion that if we can do it even both times, before we meet with the public and after the public, I think would be a terrific learning experience for them, because right now they've been silent on any expectation from us.
And we don't know, we don't know what their feelings are on it.
Exactly.
And again, they're going to vote on it, too.
Yeah. Madam Chair, my recommendation would be just what Susan said. I think very favorably have beaten with them on the 6th of June, if we can get on the agenda, but also following it up after the 25th or whatever, 26th of June, to follow up and to report back.
We're also going to have to report to them in advance of Fall Town Meeting, anyway.
Probably a couple of times.
We're even going to get a third one. How exciting.
One would hope by that time we can present them...
We still have to go back to them.
Yeah, this is exactly, like, finished product, something that's all polished up.
And then they can't say, well, where does all this come from?
You know about this.
Right, right.
Because, hey, no, we told you in June.
Right. Yep.
Okay. All right. I'm glad we could agree on that. That's good. So I have no, I just pulled up the latest agenda from the Board of Selectmen, it's blank, you know, out in June. They don't know. They're trying to, so let's see if we can get on. See if we can get on.
Would you want the Planning Board at that June 6th meeting?
Yes, if anyone could come that Tuesday evening, that would be great. Anytime more than one of us shows up is always helpful.
We can also, I mean, the next meeting is early in May, May 3rd, so by then, we can have, you know, the drafts of everything that was going to be posted on the website. I think people really wanted to have it early and not waiting, so I think, you know, hopefully we can come to some resolution and all that stuff at that May 3rd meeting, so then we can post it directly thereafter, and then people will have a good understanding of what we're talking about.
Kathy, is it just that one question from Town Council you're waiting on? Is there anything else?
No, that's just the one edit related to the parking and then the one question from, and then I guess, you know, I'll follow up with DPW, if they have any.
Understood.
So, again, we have the draft 10 that we've, we've been living with, Peter, for... for quite some time. And the key provisions we've had the most discussion about are lot size, number of bedrooms, the apartment size, and then, of course, whether it's some by right, all by right, all by permit. And the draft 10 that we have now is a bit of a hybrid with all being special permit with the exception of three different categories, primarily based on size and kind of the look of what the public might see, the next door neighbors might see. So we've discussed it and we all have varying opinions on it, but we've tried to make it, remember, this is a document we want to get in front of the public that captures as many of the views that we've heard already and let them react to it. Let them tell us what parts of this they like and that they don't like. And try to put together the best amendment for a special town meeting that will pass. I think that is our, that is our goal, to get something that opens up accessory apartments to a broader number of tenants. I'll speak for myself. I've, I've, I've considered the definition of a tenant to be irrelevant. Why does it have to be family? Why does it have to be affordable? We shouldn't, we shouldn't care about who the tenant is. And we've heard that from the public. There are others, other members of the board who feel very strongly, differently about that, about the, about the lot size. We've had various discussions about lot size. So I'm not sure who wants to start, but I think it would be good for Peter to hear where kind of we sit on this. And then, Peter, if you could share with us your, your initial thoughts on this at your second meeting of the planning board. So you want to start, Susan? I'm going to turn to you.
I'll start because, because as you know, I'm on, I'm on the staff side on this and have been almost from the very beginning. I'm with you on who uses it. I'm willing to, you know, I think the two lot sizes, the 10, 15,000, that's workable. I was never wild about allowing businesses to be, you know, conducted in the ADUs, but there seemed to be some sentiment that that was the right thing to do. The one issue that I feel very strongly about is the issue of these ADUs or any ADUs being authorized by special permit only, mainly because at the more macro level, special permit requires a public hearing and the public, the neighbors, the butters, I think it's within 300--
Yeah.
--are all notified. That, an application has been put in. That's a right that the citizens currently enjoy. I am loathe, as a volunteer on a board appointed by the Selectmen, to engage in a discussion that's going to take from a citizen a right they currently enjoy. In addition, and that, and I feel that way, as you know, about the sale. Right now, the bylaw says if the property is sold, the relationship with the ADU is terminated and you've got to start the process all over again. And that would require--
No, it does not say that, Susan.
I thought it was the opposite.
No, the current bylaw, the one that we have right now--
Current bylaw.
Yeah, the current bylaw.
Unless you, and then you have--
Unless you have the 45 days, right. So I'm willing to live--
Do something within 45 days and you lose no rights.
Exactly, exactly. So I'm willing to live with that language, the 45-day language. I'm not, I think that, because that does give the public, if they don't do anything and they have to apply again, again, there's an issue of public notice. I think that's very important. It's an issue, it's a right that citizens currently enjoy. In addition, this permit process that's being contemplated in 407.4 sets up a two-tier sort of level of citizenry where some people get noticed and others don't. I don't think that's the right approach we should be taking. I think we should be looking at a more standardized, it's, hate to say it, but it's sort of a one-size-fits-all, that everyone should have a right to comment on, regardless of the size of your lot, regardless of whether it's new. It is a, an activity that affects, directly affects your neighborhood and quite value, you know, the value of your property. And I am loathe to think that we would be advocating taking someone's right away. And that's, I think that's very important. I mean, you know, we, you've heard, I mean, we'll point out, we've been, you know, criticized because we haven't done enough to sort of engage the public. And yet, we're putting forth a proposal that will strip from the public a right they currently enjoy in two instances. And I just think if we're, if, if, I just don't think it's, I don't think, quite frankly, I don't think we're going to get it passed. If our goal is to get something passed, I think, and I, and as you know, our, the, my neighbors are, that is the barricade issue. They're willing to, you know, go with the size thing. They're willing to go with the ADU. They worked out, you know, we worked with Kathy on the packing thing. I think Hyannis Pack, you know, they're the ones that, early on, I think one of their spokesmen got up and said, what does the difference whether it's a 30,000-square-foot lot or a 10,000-square-foot lot? It would be a public notice. And people should be allowed to comment on it. That's the whole purpose of, you know, public engagement and democracy. So I, that, those are, that's it. I mean, I, and you've listened to me now for months on that issue. So otherwise, I think there's a lot of thought that's gone into this. I do think, you know, our original, as you know, our original bylaw back in the 80s, I think was grounded on a very good public, you know, good idea that we had the elderly and we had affordable housing. We're two huge issues back then. So when we fashioned that, we addressed those two issues at the time. That has changed and we're willing to open that up and broaden the use of these. And there, we've addressed the size of the lot issue. There's been, there's been a lot of fundamental change here. But moving away from special permit to even a variation of by right, I think is, is just not the thing we should be doing. And how do we explain to a citizen, because you live in a certain area or because of a person, that you're not entitled to a public notice? I just don't think we can justify that. I really don't. And quite frankly, there's no harm. There is no harm done in public notice. There's no harm done in allowing people to know what's going on. I think there's setting up a two-tiered system where we say to Will, because you, you know, you're not going to get public notice, but Susan Bredner is. That doesn't seem logical to me at all. And in a more practical manner, I just don't think we're going to get passed. I just don't think we're going to get this through a town meeting with that kind of expla-- we have to get up and explain it. And I would be one of them saying, hey, I don't agree with all that. And it would be nice to send something to the Board of Selectmen that we ultimately say is a unanimous document. Right now, I would not support this. If you want to put a period after, shall you, shall require special, I'm willing to go, and we can, we can clean up the, the sale language by incorporating some of the original, the languages in our original sale. Short of that, I'm with the pitchfork group. I'm not going to take away anyone's right to a public hearing.
Thank you, Susan. Will?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we have come a long way since November, October, late September. I'm kidding. I don't know. I think it was October because we were trying to rush into potentially a Fall Town Meeting. So it would have been September.
It was late September, yes.
So we're at the, hopefully getting towards the business end of a, of a journey. And, and I do agree with Susan that there has been lots of movement as well as movement within the board itself while all this is going on. I, I kept thinking earlier today that originally my hope was, how can we make this as less, how can we have this less restrictive so that more people will throw their name in the hat, right? So that more people will take advantage of the opportunity to try to improve the, the variety, because this is a variational issue, too, of the housing stock in our town. And I do feel like, for very good reason, through passionate conversation as well as listening to the public, I think that, that funnel has been, has been closed a lot. I don't think it's been shut off, but I think it's been closed. And I, and I respect that. And I do agree, as Susan said, that we've come to a place where, yes, there can be 10,000 minimum, but yes, there can be a 15,000. And those two things are different and they should be treated differently, at least according to where we are now. I do hear, I do hear what Susan's saying about public notification. And at the same time, I keep reading what the reasons would be to not have public notification. And I, I'm sort of, I'm sort of, I'm sort of struggling with your very, your very well-intentioned point about public notice not doing any harm. And at the same time, I keep seeing, well, if, if it's a fully conforming lot and structure, if the accessory apartment is located within the dwelling and there's no increase in structure height or size and is limited to a studio or one bedroom, so it would not even kick in for our friends at 15,000 feet. And the third one, being that the expansion is in full compliance with all the current requirements, part of me feels like, no, I don't think everybody needs to be notified in those, in those, with those exceptions. So I am, given the path that we're on and what we've come from and what we're about to jump into in about 60 days, maybe a little less, I'm certainly open to where Susan's coming from about public notice, maybe more than I was before. And at the same, because I agree that the amount of work that we've put into this is also because hopefully when we get to this finish line in September, October, there will be passage. So I am also trying to be sensitive to the fact that we are trying to pass something that hopefully will improve the housing stock of the town of Yarmouth. And at the same time, I have, I'd be interested to hear not just from those that agree with Susan, but those that don't, from the public, about these three exceptions. And maybe when the smoke clears, maybe there aren't three. Maybe there are none. Maybe there are one. Maybe there are two. Maybe there's all three. I don't know. But I do agree that it is certainly worth having further discussion. And the good news is, we're not done yet. We still have another 90 days at least, you know, to kind of hear from the public as well as from the Select Board eventually. And this might be, and I would imagine, a major concern for not just you, Susan, but lots of people. At the same time, I think there's some reasoned discussion to be had for why these very well-intentioned exclusions could also be feasible. So overall, I'm, I'm intrigued about where we've been, certainly about where we're going. I still am, am hopeful that when we have our three meetings in June, that we'll have, I'll just use the word, robust turnout. And I have no way of knowing whether that's going to happen, but I do know, and I think as we've talked many times in the past few months, I do know that we'll be able to show up, let's say, August 1st, September 1st, certainly July 1st and say, we feel like we did as much as we could do in order to be on the right path to get something passed. And there's still chapters yet to be written. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Will.
Yes, certainly.
Well, I'm smiling because when I talked to the people in Dennis, they actually had several sort of kickouts, what I'm calling kickouts. And they also had made a decision they were not going to speak in zonies because people don't know what 2 or 3.4 is. And so, and that complicated their discussion because they wanted to keep it simple that people would understand. And they ultimately came to the conclusion that they couldn't. People wouldn't, don't even know the size of their lot, let alone whether it's conforming or non-conforming. And, and I think--
Yeah, that's a good point.
It was at one of those Selectmen meetings that the Select, they call them Selectmen over there, right, Dennis? I think the Selectmen sort of said to them, be careful how you word this because people are not going to understand what they're doing. It's sort of like what Kathy said, if we go to the town meeting and start passing our ADU flyers, they'll go crazy because they're going to think it's on the, on the agenda that night. And they will. You know, people will just go berserk. So it's not, you're right. It's an issue that, that at least Dennis tried to grapple with. And, you know, what can we do, something that's sort of more reasonable, but they decided not, ultimately ended not doing it because they simply couldn't figure out a simple way to do it.
Kathy?
I was just wondering if, I looked on the town website in Dennis, but I couldn't find any. Did they have some materials that didn't speak zonies that we could get our hands on? I mean, did, was the person that you spoke with--
You know, I don't know, I don't know. Since they were a study group, I don't know if they kept, I didn't ask the question, did they keep minutes of their meetings?
No, I think they did.
Do you have minutes?
Either that, or they're certainly, when they went in front of the Selectmen, they--
But I think the actual study group did because I know Carolyn Carey, who was on the committee--
Right.
I don't know if you've spoken to her. I'm, I'm 99% sure that they kept minutes of everyone in their meeting.
But they don't necessarily have all the packet information attached. And, and that's what I'm looking at. It's like, what was being presented? Maybe I can grub around and see some of their public meetings that they gave.
But I agree. If, if they've already plowed a lot of this earth--
Well, they did, but they--
As it relates to public engage, I mean, just on the issue of public engagement, obviously their entire bylaw is a different beast.
Totally different, yeah.
But, but in some of the blocking and tackling and even some of the strategy, it could be useful, for sure.
They took a very, they took a, well, remember, they were a study group. It was not the planning board. The planning board was a member of the study group. And they had sort of standing members. They had the building commissioner, the health, the regular cast of characters, you'd think. And then they brought in experts as the topics arose. For example, Carolyn brought in a mortgage person to explain if you were going to sell your property or you were going to try to refinance, what would, what would the presence of an ADU do to your mortgage rates or things. And they brought in architects. They brought in landscape people to address the parking kind of stuff. And put all that together, went back to the Selectmen and said, this is what we think, you know, based on what we, what do you think, guys? And it was a very iterative process. That's why it took them so long. But their goal always is, always was, once we get it done, it's going to pass. And the Selectmen said, don't bring us anything that won't pass. Don't make a recommendation that's not going to pass. We've spent too much time doing this. Let's make sure when we get it in front of the citizens, they're going to support it, so.
Peter?
Can I ask Susan and Will what were the thoughts on the two bedrooms versus one bedrooms? Or the conversation, how that came to be, I guess?
You know, I, I was always, I don't care, quite frankly, about bedroom size. I mean, I'm with Joanne on that, whether it's one or two--
Number of bedrooms are you asking?
I think he's asking about number of bedrooms.
It's irrelevant to me. I don't care whether it's one or two. To me, it was always lot size. And I, I would have endorsed raising the minimum lot size from 10,000 to 15,000. But I think the compromise we, we worked out was, at 10,000, you'll have this and at 15,000, you'll have that. I think that's a good compromise. Because a larger lot size obviously can accommodate a larger, a larger unit. But, and that's, that's, it was irrelevant to me. It was always lot size. The important thing to me was lot size. And what you could do on, I don't want to see these 10,000-square-foot lots crammed with, because my neighbor is a living example of what happens when that, when you take a 10,000-square-foot lot and you put an ADU on it. It is very dense, very dense. But I think we worked out a good compromise on that. And we did the 10 and 15 and I think that will work. And I think the citizens will, will endorse that concept.
Yeah, you saw, I mean, you probably saw the table and then the iterative maps and the different color. We had a whole color palette. And then we sort of, then we restricted the color palette because it was too many colors. But I agree. I think that there were some of us that just felt to not have it at 10,000 just did not make a lot of sense. And at the same time, we also were trying to be respectful of the fact that maybe those people that didn't understand the 10,000-foot issue were not necessarily the people that lived in a neighborhood full of 10,000-foot lots. So it was sort of in the spirit, as you said, Susan, of compromise. And that's how we ended up there. That's my recollection.
That's exactly.
I mean, I was, the 10,000, 15,000, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and the special permit question were sort of the, the three things that I was sort of focused on the most after going through this. I'm in a 10,000-square-foot neighborhood, so I can see what happens, you know, in terms of density already, what exists today. I am in favor of special permit being required for all uses, for all types. And I just think that's going to allow a butters the opportunity, you know, to voice their concerns. Because I think all potential issues in different neighborhoods might present themselves differently. You're basically taking a single family and you're turning it into a two-family. However you want to call it. I mean, you can add an ADU. It's an accessory unit, but you're still putting two families--
On a one-family lot.
In a one-family lot. You're adding another driveway. You're adding more cars, another work truck, two more dogs, another boat, another camper, more trash, more traffic, more water use. So you are doing all those things. So I do think a special permit would be something I would support for sure. Yeah. So that's where I'm at right now.
All right.
Sure, Madam Chair. I guess I want to actually circle back and ask the rest of the board a question because just like Peter, I wasn't here at the very start of this. I actually have only been on the board three months myself. Certainly understand in the three months, we spent a lot of time. And there has been some movement and a ton of discussion about ADUs. I want to take it just a step back. So I better understand it because then maybe I'll understand the whole special permit side of it and everything else. Because right now, I'm still leaning on, you know, there's-- Because right now, I'm still leaning on, you know, there's still a piece of me that says, special permit may be the way to go, but reading the three by rights, I guess I'll call it, fully conforming lot, if I have a lot big enough to handle it, no offense, but if I'm going to build it, pay for it, pay the taxes on the structure, why am I going to let a neighbor who's not paying any of my bills, if I want to put another ADU on my lot, tell me what to do? That's just one side of it. So, I, I guess my question, really back to you, Madam Chair, is this, what was the impotence back in November, October, whenever it was, to go and readdress what we had to what we're doing? Help me understand that a little better, maybe I'll understand where the, the rest of the path is, because I, I've been ended along with you, holding everybody's hand, after we've gone down the road, but I don't know where we started the path from, because I wasn't here then, so.
Fair question.
It's a very fair question. It, it started with the request and the development of a petition article-
Mm-hmm.
-that was one that had everything by right, essentially. And had very few limitations on it, in terms of square footage. It was as open and broad, and, and an amendment that across the Cape, no, no town had an amendment of that, that was that wide open. But we had several meetings in the fall with the proponents, obviously the petitioners. We had to have a public hearing for the petition, on behalf of the petitioners. And what we heard, and what I think became the initial draft document, where we, we said, let's think about being open to some hybrid, that it's not an all or nothing. And there were members of the board who, who felt strongly one way or another. And so, in order to have our deliberations represent as many of the, of the views of the board, you, you, you see in front of you, Draft 10, of a document that tried to protect the, the, the rights of property owners who already are conforming, already are large, and already could accommodate a 900 square foot building, because that's the max. The other category of, of consideration was, it's inside of your house. Nothing on the outside of your house changed. Nothing that your neighbors could see was different.
Parked.
Well, I think she meant structurally.
Yeah, structurally, the, the improvement.
Building code.
Was inside, you know, that, let's put that one in that bucket.
Mm-hmm.
It was kind of developing a bucket. And, so that's how it became this bit of a hybrid, where there were concerns from the public that we heard on both sides, who wanted maybe this hybrid, but some were, no, it should all be by right, and some were, no, it should all be permit. So that's how we moved to a position where, what would be the least intrusive, if you will, by right? Already conforming lot, already conforming building, and the proposed building, additional accessory apartment, would also be conforming.
May I mention some other context?
Yeah, sure.
I think the other thing that happened, Ken, was that there was, at least how it felt to me, it felt like this citizen's petition, like, popped up about, I want to say about 30 days before Fall Town Meeting. Nothing illegal about it, but it just, it sort of emerged. And I think it came, if I recall, Madam Chair, it came as a surprise to us. I mean, certainly to me, I can't speak for you, Madam Chair. And I think what happened was, is we then were sort of like, in a bit of a race, to try to understand it, first of all, and the implications of, as you mentioned, a very wide-ranging, or in some ways, not wide-ranging, initial citizen's proposal. And then, to even, so we had to make sense of it, then we also had to make all these deadlines, which were in very short order. And I think that was also part of the, the initial sort of scramble, and I think we all, at the time, felt like, we didn't like the idea of being rushed.
Right.
Especially about something that had, in its very initial reaction, set off quite some passionate reactions.
An uproar.
Okay, that too, an uproar. So, so I think, what, what we then did is, we sort of, you know, through the, through the initial rush, because it really was a rush, to try to figure out if we could even make it on to Fall Town Meeting, or much less support it, if it did, I think we were able to educate ourselves, have some initial passionate reaction, and then, if I recall, sort of educate the petitioner, that this wasn't going to go very well. And so, once they withdrew, we did, we sort of, I think at the same time, sort of made a promise that, okay, this is now back on our agenda, in a way that, again, excuse the expression, was just sort of, it just sort of popped up. It wasn't that we weren't going to get to it, quote unquote, it's just that we weren't quite there when it did. However, what it did is, it then prompted us to then start our own discussions, and using the, some of those initial reactions, as you mentioned, Madam Chair, to sort of say, okay, what's a hybrid version of this look like? And then, we've been doing since, I would say, mid-November, is that, is that reasonable context?
Yeah, that's fair. And, and we did some basic reconnaissance, what are other towns doing?
Yes.
And other towns have hybrids.
Mm-hmm.
Other times, other towns are all-
Other towns don't.
And other towns don't.
Right.
So, so that's where we-
Yeah.
-more or less landed with those-
Right.
-three exceptions. And on most of the other elements of dimension, such as lot size, size of the unit, we more or less came to some agreement on those. I think the question of one and two bedrooms, I, I think I, I may have said along the way that, yes, a two-bedroom in a larger unit, but even two bedrooms and 900, I now have got concerns about, primarily because of wastewater.
Yeah.
You know, I, we've heard so much about wastewater recently, it just has triggered for me, a whole different looksee, for me personally, at, the word accessory, to me, is a key word, and that's what, we call it now, and I'm hoping we continue to call it, an accessory apartment. It's, and it should be, it should be looked at as such. And so, I'm getting more and more comfortable with a one-bedroom limitation, primarily because of septic.
And I think-
Primarily because of septic.
I just did a couple of things, also, on Will's comment about how sort of pressed and rushed we were, don't forget, the board had been told twice, that although there was a citizen petition out there, it was not going to come before the board for the Fall Town Meeting.
Which board was told twice?
This board was told twice, at a meeting by one of our members, that there was a citizen petition, however, it was not going to come in front of the board. So we felt, oh, we had the winter and we had the spring to examine the citizen petition and do, and maybe have something ready for the spring, spring meeting. And lo and behold, literally one week after we were told, it was on the, they had gone to town, the Board of Select, and it was on the, and we were really pressed to do something. That coincided with, all of a sudden, people finding out there was a citizen petition, and, and as you saw, that meeting, that first meeting we had, everyone showed up, because the chant was, what's going on? We don't know what's going on. And quite frankly, we didn't either. We just sort of had, had our first brush at this, and of the, the citizen petition. And as Joanne said, it was very, very broad, very broad.
There is a real danger in zoning by petition.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
There is a, there is a huge liability.
Without question.
Yes.
That alone, that alone for the board, that alone for the board was another-
You don't want to watch the six hours of meetings from October and November, Ken? You just got the shortcut.
No, and I think the selectmen felt the same way. I think the selectmen felt the same way, although there was never a formal declaration by the selectman. But I think they felt that, gee, this is a huge thing to be doing by citizen petition, and give, and jamming us in terms of a couple of weeks to try to get it done. And our reaction was quite appropriate. We stepped back and said, hey, wait a minute, we're not ready to do this.
And I think it's important context, Joanne, for when you do go to the Board of Select, that, you know, when you do get your opportunity to chat with them about where we are now, I think it's important to give this, to give the, to just sort of a friendly reminder that, that this came from a very rushed process, and a very wide-ranging possibility that wasn't, that was sort of a non-starter, I guess we could say, but that we feel like we have now done the, done a lot of work. And certainly by the time you get to the, whether it's pre-June 6th, or post-June 27th, I feel like some of this context is important for the Board of Select to remember, because it, it has come a long way, and a very deliberate, and, and not as long as the, as our neighbors in Dennis, that took 18 months, but I still feel like, and here we are, as, as you know, we had decided not even to, if you want to call it, rush into Spring Town Meeting, for lots of different reasons, which we don't need to necessarily go into. So I do feel like, in our own way, we have been deliberative, and I think it's important to remember, it actually started because we were rushed.
Mm-hmm.
And, but yet, here we are.
But I, I, I will say, that it, it, the, the outcome, for me, that there was a petition, said to me that, there are people out there who want this, who want a change to our accessory apartment zoning bylaw. And they came, and we heard from them as well. So, in, in some ways, it was one way to generate some public interest, to get our attention, and it did.
Right.
It did.
And it did. Madam Chair, can I just conclude, since I asked the question, I just want you had asked us the question, just so everyone's clearly understood from my position, I think there's been a lot of thought and a lot of process put in to get us to the point where we're at. I'm comfortable with the draft as it currently sits, but I will say this, I will certainly, our listing session's in June, and I hope all of us feel the same way, is that, number one, I hope they're well-attended, and number two, whatever is out there is consensus from the public, I certainly, we all take that as a consensus, and if we have to make adjustments, and have it all be by special permit, I'm not going to stand in the way.
Okay.
And I also recognize that we're missing two members tonight.
We're missing two members.
But I do feel like there is some time for both of you to hear from Mr. Vincent and Mr. Saban, and hopefully you'll allow that opportunity to happen in a, in a subsequent meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Madam Chair, I do, I do share your, your thoughts, I think, your initial thought is two bedrooms, is, is that really an accessory unit, is that really an accessory apartment? Once you get to two bedrooms, whether you take a four-bedroom, and you divide it in half, and you have two bedrooms and two bedrooms, or you have to use your existing bedrooms, so there's not a lot of five-bedrooms houses that might consider this. But that's a two-family, that's a certain, that's a clear two-family, that's no longer an accessory. There's a lot of, there's a lot going on, on that small lot, on that 15,000 square foot lot.
And that was also one of the big issues that Dennis grappled with, because they were very concerned about the tax base, and the, how you do, how you develop a tax for a residential neighborhood versus a, a neighborhood that's got multifamily housing on it. And they did a lot of research with their finance, not research, but discussion with the finance, how would this impact the tax base? If we have so many now that are not quite residential, they're sort of two-family, how is that going to affect the tax rate, and, and long-term, how's that going to affect Dennis? That's a real issue, that is a real issue, and it's an issue, especially in a town like Yarmouth, where we are now committing to several hundred million dollars on our wastewater project. I mean, we need to stabilize our tax base, and we can't do much, and shouldn't do anything, quite frankly, to jeopardize it. And a lot of people think that this, moving from a purely residential-zoned tax program to something that has a very liberal interpretation of ADUs, could have tax consequences. That is something they discussed in Dennis, too. And we never got a chance to do that, because we can sort of draw on the stuff that's out there, but that is a real, that's a real consideration.
Okay. Any, any other comments? Good discussion, thank you for joining in. I hope this was helpful, Peter, to give you some perspective on where we are, and I will certainly speak with Chris and-
Jim.
And Jim, at our, for our next meeting.
So, at the meeting with the selectmen, are we all going to be allowed to say something, or how are we going to present this?
Well, I think we'd be presenting our plan for public outreach.
Okay.
At some point, I think the, the Board of Select will want to know how, well, we'll, we need to vote on it anyway.
Right, yeah.
And then they will want to know why.
Yeah.
They have done that in the past.
Yeah, okay.
They have done that in the past. Okay. Next up on our agenda is committee assignments. Kathy provided us a list of our assignments with one edit-
I wish I corrected.
With one edit. And I'm going to let, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Kathy now, because she's spoken with both Peter and Jim-
Yeah.
-who are affected by this.
I did speak with Jim Saban today, and he indicated that he was interested in the Community Housing Committee assignment, because as Peter had expressed some interest in the Community and Economic Development Committee. So he would, he said he would be comfortable with being assigned, the Community Housing Committee, the board wished.
Any, any concerns or questions about that realignment? You guys are, you're good, Peter?
He didn't want the Affordable Housing Trust, he just was looking for the Community-
And that's not, I, I learned from you today, that's not a required assignment.
No.
Okay. So we'll be covered with that. So I, I do need to make a motion on this, right, Kath?
Yeah, it's best.
May I have a motion to accept the revised committee assignments, which reflect the membership of Jim Saban on Community Housing Committee, and Peter Slovac on Community and Economic Development Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Any discussion? Ken?
Aye. Aye, yeah, have you, discussion, or just-
No, no, discuss, we do a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Peter. Will?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you.
We usually do another conversation about this in the-
September.
In September.
So, I was going to ask, I think you will.
Yeah.
We do officers and committee assignments.
Okay.
Okay. Meeting minutes. May I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes of April 5th, 2023?
Second.
I'm sorry, who was that?
I move.
Peter?
Ken, Ken got it.
Ken, all right.
Any discussion? Roll call again, Ken?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Committee updates. Any committee meetings since our last meeting?
Yeah, I, I do, I was, I was looking for my, here it is, right here. Just a quick update on wastewater committee rec, just kind of where we're at, and just a couple of the critical things that have come and passed. They are rece, and we are now in receipt, town should, should say, is in receipt of the bids on contract number two, which is Route 28, Long Pond to North Main Street, and receipt of bids on contract number, yeah, they are as of this week, receipt of bids on contract number three, which is Bridge Street to Route 28, Long Pond, including Social Drive. So there certainly has been a, you know, a ton of movement since our last meeting, I'm just trying to see where the project's at. Groundwater permit, discussion with C.D.M. Smith, bid advertising for, as I just mentioned, for two and three, and we are in receipt of the 60% Joanne for the wastewater collection facility on Buck Island. So, the project's moving forward, I just remind everybody, town meetings next week, hugely important that this gets out there and passes.
This is crossing the Rubicon next week.
May I ask a quick question, Madam Chair?
Certainly.
There have been some public, I think, was there an event here, or something happened a few days ago?
The 13th year center.
Senior Center? How was, how was the turnout? I'm just curious.
It was not as robust- It was not as robust as we had hoped. It was good, but it wasn't quite-
A hundred people, I mean, it was a hundred. I heard it was like a hundred people.
I don't think it was quite a hundred. It was good, but I don't know if it was, you know, rarely, we're hoping town meeting is, the room is full.
Not the only one you've done, either. So I respect that it's been a long series.
My neighbors went, and they said it was very good. They were, you know what shocked them? Is that the town actually answered their questions, which I think is kind of a low bar. But they thought it was very good, they thought the information was very timely. I think the town has done a really good job with sending out the mailers. I've polled like a ton of the people on my mailing list, I don't know anyone that's going to vote against it. They're all, you know, if nothing else is so sick of hearing, get it out of the way, let's vote for it and get it over with. But I think the town's done a really good job educating the public on this one.
I think the town has, you know, put together probably the best plan that they could, truly. And I think they've done a great job, Susan, for getting the word out there and educating the community. I just remind everybody, next week, April twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Right. Thanks, Ken.
Any other committee updates? Okay, I'm sorry.
I was hoping that's in my place, that Kathy would just mention the last meeting of the Open Space Rec Plan, because I wasn't able to be there. That was last, to Friday, it was since the last time we met.
Yeah, and we're also meeting again on Friday.
We are meeting Friday, but I just thought, for the record, if there was any highlights you wanted to share.
We're working on, we have some identified our goals, and we're working on some specific objectives and then action items in order to implement those goals, so we're continuing to work on that. We're also using that as the basis for the second survey, which we need to finalize on Friday, so we can get that out to people, kind of vetting all of the action items that we think are meeting the goals, and how the public thinks about it and how we're doing. We've also finished all the site assessments. We went out and finished some of the buildings that had been locked and went in there. There's just a lot of stuff happening in the background with filling out some, flushing out some of the, flushing out some of the body of the report and updating things. So we're still working on that. We'd like to have it by June, a draft into DCR, but it's going to be tight. It's going to be tight. Doesn't have to be the final version, but if we have a draft in, then we'd still be eligible for grant applications in July.
Has it been by June thirty?
Yeah.
Okay, because, you know, we just got there, just twenty-nine more days, right there. You said June, so I just said June thirty.
We're hoping for the best. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Kathy, for that update.
Any other board member items, correspondence?
Kathy, the only thing I would mention, I should have mentioned it last time, is I didn't mention that the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee had a meeting on March twenty-fourth, twenty-seventh. And they were really looking at different ways of getting additional funding for the project through naming rights and/or donations. And we had met with an existing nonprofit that exists in Town Community Vision to try and see whether that's something that we could utilize in order to garner additional funds. We're actively working on that. We're kind of putting it on hold until after town meeting, but we're going to need to go to the Board of Selectmen and talk to them about it, and see how they feel about it. But in addition to sewer, there's some rather large requests for funding for the Riverwalk Park, the Boardwalk, and the event space. As inflation has not been friendly to the sewer project, it has not been friendly to our project that we've been working on since two thousand and fifteen, trying to get this project. But we have a very viable project, we're on the cusp of actually getting something done after thirty-seven years of trying on this site. So I hope everyone comes out at town meeting and votes for the Riverwalk Park funding. It's going to be very important to get something done. We're so close, I'd hate to see us slip to the side because we kind of blink at the last minute and get a little concerned about the money. There's still going to be significant CPA funding that's left over for other projects. So hopefully, everyone will be voting for that.
Both of these projects, Kathy, will dramatically change the town for the better.
I think so, absolutely. And if anybody wants to get up and speak positively about it during those, that would be much appreciated.
Plenty of people, I'm sure plenty of people will.
If they call for a vote and there's no one, go right to the vote, get the vote over with.
I hope so.
Aye.
Anything else, Kathy? Nope, that's it. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
We have our next meetings, right?
Oh, next meetings, yeah, May third, May seventeenth. Kathy, for the May third meeting, we might have some draft of the outreach materials?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we can certainly have what the landing page will look like, what the information will be on there. They might be seeing, and this is some of the things, it might be a little bit dynamic. We might have a one version that goes up initially, but as we get more information or whatever, we'll be propagating that and adding more information.
Now, are there any, do you mind if I ask, Madam Chair?
No, please.
Are there any other applications that have come your way for things that might come on our agenda?
There's some potential for some things to come to us. We do have the red jacket, I think they're going to hopefully go through Conservation Commission first, because that's probably be a bigger hurdle than coming to the planning board. And then we'll kind of see where we go from there.
Thank you.
Now, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Ken?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Joanne?
Aye.
Thank you.